Okay, good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to an early August committee of the whole meeting. It is moved by Counselor Varney, second by Counselor Hunter. Be resolved that the council agenda as presented on August 12, 2025 be approved as circulated. All in favor? Please vote. That carries, thank you. Okay, it is moved by Counselor Johnston, second by Counselor Jorgensen. Be it resolved that the next portion of the meeting be closed to the public in order to consider personnel matters about an identifiable individual, including municipal or local board employees. Please vote. And that carries, thank you. Okay, so to the public, we will be back in, at three o'clock for the regular portion of our meeting. Okay, welcome back. And we were in a closed session from 2:45 until 3:00. And we do have something coming out of there on the council agenda later this afternoon. It is moved by Counselor Hunter, second by Counselor Strength. Be it resolved that the committee, the whole agenda of August 12, 2025 be approved as circulated. All in favor? Okay, that carries, thank you. And Counselor, are there any disclosures of cunary interest today? Okay, seeing none. Counselor Varney, could you please deliver the land acknowledgement statement?
We would like to begin today's meeting by acknowledging the First Peoples, who for thousands of years before us were and are still the keepers and caretakers of this land, where we now live and work, and in particular, the Chippewas of Rama, Watah, Mohawk First Nations, and the Moon River Métis. We are dedicated to honoring Indigenous history and culture and committed to moving forward in the spirit of reconciliation and respect with all First Nation, Métis, and Inuit people. We recognize all the generations of Indigenous people and their historic connection to this place, and we are grateful for the opportunity to gather here at this time.
Okay, thank you. So today, we do have four deputations. And it is my pleasure to start. The first went off with Finn McDonald, who was the 2025 Gravenhurst High School GHS bursary recipient. And I'll share with you that this is a bursary that we give out every year. Very difficult job, as we all know. It's very hard to choose who gets money in this community. And I would like to thank Counselors Strength and Counselor Robinson, who do, who did make the decision this year. And again, it's not easy. We have lots of really great, I don't want to call them kids because they're, they're young adults. But we had lots of people that were worthy of it. But we found, or they found that Finn was the, had a really great essay. And I'm going to introduce him now, and he's going to tell you what he's going to do with his next year. So come on up, Finn. We'll give you a round of applause afterwards, after we hear what you're doing. So yeah, if you don't mind, sorry to put you on the spot, but you know more about you than I do. So if you could just give us, you know, an idea of what it is that you're going to be doing next year.
Yeah, of course. Great. Yeah, so next year, I will be attending University of Ottawa. I'll be taking a dual major in political science and philosophy. And my main goal is to pursue law. I'd love to study law, I'm not sure what kind yet. But if that becomes less of an interest, then I'd love to pursue something in government.
Great. And Ottawa is a pretty great place to go, especially if you are looking into, you know, politics, right? So Counselor, are there any questions for Finn? I know that Counselor Johnston had a, had something to, you wanted to ask. Go ahead, Counselor Johnston.
Through you, it's not so much a question as a comment. I want to thank Counselor Robinson and Strength for the selection. And as the mayor pointed out, we have a lot of remarkable young men and women in this community. This young man, I couldn't bypass the opportunity to tell everyone what a remarkable young man he is. I met him a year ago when I was recruiting students to make presentations at the summit on the environment. And Finn, along with Taren and Ohm, made the presentation which brought everyone to their feet. And everyone was stunned by how much these young people knew about climate. And since that time, I was asking Finn, there was an international organization that heard about these three young people and approached them about joining this organization. It's by invitation only. They have, or they have groups all around the world. And so it's just another testament to what a wonderful young man we have here and a wonderful group of young adults, as the mayor has pointed out, we have at Gravenhurst. So I just wanted to say, well done, Finn, and it was a pleasure meeting you. And I'm going to follow your career.
Thank you.
Thank you, worship.
Well, I think that's a good time to give Finn a round of applause. So thanks for coming in today, we appreciate it. And we know that you skipped out of work to come here today, so we do appreciate you coming.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Okay. Take care. So again, that's all good news today. One of the, there's a lot of great things about this job, but I think that we can all agree that one of the really meaningful things that we do here is work with a great group of people. Our staff are the backbone of this place and the community. So whenever we get to recognize their contributions, I think it's a really powerful time for all of us. So with that, I would like to invite Bessie Steele to come to the podium so we can see her. So, no getting out of it, Bessie, I know. Today, we celebrate the accomplishment of our administration, administrative clerk, too, Bessie Steele. Bessie has recently completed the Municipal Administration Program, offered by the Association of Municipal Clerks and Treasurers of Ontario. The MAP program consists of multiple education units that focus on providing students with knowledge and skills that are essential to working in municipal organizations. The four-part program consisted of units on local government, administrative structure, financial management, and municipal management. Bessie has successfully completed the requirements of the course, including obtained, obtain the skills to navigate through various municipal structures, understand the relationships between statutory responsibilities with other levels of government, adapt to change in this ever-evolving municipal climate, and provide enhanced research and communications for various audiences, including council, government bodies, and internal and external stakeholders. We would like to congratulate Bessie today on being committed to continued education and enhancing her own personal skill set to benefit her career and all of us. So thank you, we appreciate the hard work.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to say that the AMCTO MAP program, it's, it's a great foundation for all like new municipal professionals. And even though I'm two years in, I still consider myself new. But it's really foundational for anyone who hasn't taken it. So it's great, thank you.
Great. Okay. Next, we have a deputation. I'm not sure if they're going to get any applause, but maybe you might. Greg Stephens, Muskoka, oh, am I, oh, Megwin? Thank you. Ontario Health Team, request for funding support, health, human resources, physician and nurse practitioner recruitment. So I know there's a number of people here today. Okay, and I will invite a familiar face to all of us, Dr. Keith Cross. And I'll just hand it over to you. So welcome. Do you have 10 minutes for your presentation?
Thank you very much for having us. Thank you again for your participation in the Health Hub. I am Keith Cross, I'm a family doc locally. Virtually, you have Greg Stephens, who is the Director of Operations for our Ontario Health Team, and David Gravel, who is the recruiter. And we are here to ask for renewal of funding. We have been very successful in recruitment at this time and continue to do so. And hopefully, if we finish the building across the hall, David will be instrumental in filling it with practitioners for us. So I am going to throw it to Greg at the moment to give you a little bit of an education about the program. And then David will speak a little bit about the work he's doing and has done.
Well, fantastic, thanks, Dr. Cross. And maybe if we can move to the next slide?
I have it? Okay, so.
I think you do. I think you do. Perfect. So, you know, as Dr Cross pulls that together, there's a couple of things. First, we want to thank you for giving the initial funding. It was a three-year kind of pilot project to get things kicked off when we were creating the HHR Task Force, and we really appreciate Gravenhurst's support, as well as other municipalities, including the district, plus actual providers, including foundations. So thank you very much. So coming back to that, we have our HHR Task Force. It's led by clinicians in the field. In the appendix of the, the actual slide deck is the list of folks there, but you'll see leadership throughout MAAT, including, we thank Dr Cross for his leadership, including as being co-chair of the PCN and our alliance council. They have met, the problem continues. So we're seeing the same type of thing, although we've got a lot of success, which we're going to, we still see a shortfall. We sure see a shortfall of family physicians, nurse practitioners, and that's the particular folk, focus of the recruiter at this point in time and the HHR Task Force. And so the HHR Task Force asked us to go back out to municipalities and the supporters and ask for another three-year mandate for the same funding amount. That's later in the appendice, and we'll get to it. And the three years provide that level of stability to kind of outline and push the success we've seen. So going into quick stats, if we looked at CPSL, where all family physicians are licensed, including specialists, 26% of the family physicians have been in practice within MAAT for 30-plus years. So that's your snapshot today. That doesn't take into account growth, this is just to serve who we have today. 18% of nurse practitioners have been in practice for 20 years plus. So we're coming up to retirement time. To even maintain, we have to fill that kind of scale, which is quite, quite a bit. What do we have today? We have a number of wait lists. We have four independent wait lists. South Muskoka waitlist in itself is 13,000 individuals. Huntsville area waitlist is 5,100. Healthcare Connect, a little lower, 1,300. You'll see the issue here, which they are going to correct, is that you must give up your physician to join the list. So if you're moving from another area and you come up, you must give up the physician. So you see a lot lower counts. And finally, we see in Berkes Falls approximately 500 folks. So Dr Cross, can you just give your thoughts and experience with the support you've received from David and the task force, and what it means for your practices and the practices of your peers?
David has been very successful. We've had 25 new recruits in the last year. They're not all net new, because we are replacing people who have retired, as you saw on the previous slide, that we have our mature workforce. But we are, we are getting people here. We have a tour this Thursday that'll include this facility with another doctor who's looking from the United States to come to our area. So hopefully, you know, we're not always successful, but by getting people to come and see us, some will land. It's been a great program.
Fabulous. And I look at the time clock, and I know we have time, 10 minutes, so I'll proceed through the slides pretty quickly so that we can pick any questions that council may have. So Dr Cross, if you wouldn't mind going to the next slide?
About the past one, Dr Philpot, next one?
You got it. Just after, there we go. Oh, just go back to the, I think you might have skipped one. So very quickly, there's lots of opportunity right now. Dr Jane Philpott, the ministry and Ontario Health are investing for capacity, and what capacity means, that we expect that all communities will get an increase in their team allotment. To do that, of course, you need HR, you need to fill it. So one of the other things that we're seeing is investment in primary care networks. Ours is growing steadily. We're one of the only ones enrolling, and thank you, Dr Cross, for being a co-chair of that. We're already seeing success where primary care can be brought in the fold. I'm not going to go through all this because of time, but you'll see a number of things in here which are key around Practice Ready Ontario, new medical grads in Ontario, the Oprah Alliance, which David will go through on his slides to give you a little bit more of a taste. But these are all things that we can capitalize on if we have a recruiter and if we work in tandem with the community, both MAAT and Gravenhurst through the EDO as we go. So next slide, Dr Cross, if you wouldn't mind. So we are super pleased to have David join the team. He's got 20 years of experience plus in recruitment, including GPs and hospitalists and specialists. He is on multiple items which we can tap into, including Oprah, which he will go into. And one of the things that David brings to the table is the experience to be able to partnership, to partner very strongly with practices. It's practices to determine who their partners will be. So David's role is to really build the trust relationship with family practices, nurse practitioners, family health teams, so that he's getting them what they need, and you have a long-term stay for a client. So David, we'll roll into your part of the presentation, and Dr Cross, if you could move into the next slide, that would be great.
How long has it been here? I have about 20 years' experience, 16 years of it in Midland and Penetangusheen as the community and hospital recruiter there. I did some private sector recruitment, and I've been pleased to be part of MAAT since December of 2024. As Greg mentioned, part of my experience allows me to have a really strong pipeline of candidates, which I'm growing every day through the Northern Ontario School of Medicine, going to recruitment fairs. If you don't follow me yet, I'm, I'm active, very active on social media. I've been heavily involved with Practice Ready Ontario, which is bringing internationally-trained physicians into the system, and then working closely with all the other recruiters in Ontario and Jane Philpott's Primary Care Action Team. So we're aligning marketing recruitment strategies with actual HHR needs in the province. As Greg mentioned, a lot of my work in the first six months was in physician engagement and nurse practitioner engagement, community engagement with the economic development officers, officers, the CAOs, and of course, all the physician leaders. I've been doing the rubber chicken circuit with the Rotary Club, speaking to Rotary, and also have met with the William S Monk Healthcare Initiative, and actually captured an extra $20,000 to target the US market. And actually, a group of our recruiters were just in Kansas City this past weekend for a medical student and resident conference, and I'm off to Anaheim, California in October for the largest family medicine conference in the US. I'm also working closely with Muskoka Algonquin Healthcare with our two hospital sites. And I think this is where, where it's really important, is it says below 15 new physicians. Well, while Dr Cross said 25, a lot of that is the last six months, we've recruited so many new locum doctors to fill in for the summer to cover our ERs and our hospitalist programs. So one of my goals, starting out, because it takes about six months to 18 months to actually recruit a full-time doctor to establish a practice, we focused initially on making sure that we weren't going to be in the news, that we weren't, you know, threatened with ER closures or short staffing in our, in our hospitals in the summer. So a lot of that effort in the first six months was in those areas. And now, as Dr Cross just mentioned, we actually have a tour on Thursday. I've probably done probably upwards of a dozen tours already for physicians considering our area over the next six months to 18 months to two to three years. So we've had some really cool successes in the short term. The pipeline is under development. I really want to talk about collaboration, because this is what we're doing here with the municipality, Oprah. The Ontario Physician Recruitment Alliance is, all of the recruiters in Ontario have partnered together, because there's really no provincial strategy for recruitment. So all the individual recruiters have pooled a little bit of the resources, so we can go to recruitment fairs that we traditionally, as a smaller community, weren't able to afford. I just came back from Birmingham, England about six weeks ago. Actually, out of that event, scheduled tour of two doctors, and you know, we're starting to create a larger pipeline. I know that I could probably get really deep into this, into the inside baseball of what I do. I just want to let you know that I've been extremely welcomed by everyone since I started in December, which shows me that we have an extremely engaged community, and your support and the support of all the other communities in Muskoka Algonquin really shows to physicians that you care, that you want them here, and that we can really care, thrive, and explore for our physicians in the, in the community. So thanks for your time, I'll turn it back to Greg to, to wrap up.
Perfect. So Dr Cross, if you could just move to the last slide? So we want to thank you, and as you can see, these are the funding supports that have been historically provided by municipalities and the district. And we are going and we're asking all the folks on this list for the same funding level for the next three years. And so far, we're getting very good reception from folks for the councils that we've talked to. So far, we've gotten success in that folks are considering it for their budget and/or approved on the spot when available. So we are looking for support for three-year funding from the town of Gravenhurst, the amount of $10,000, as indicated, and this is the same level that was provided in the last three years. The, the dates that would be covered would be upcoming from December 26 forward, and we do appreciate your time and consideration for the request. And I think that's it, if we could bring the slides down. If we have time for questions, I was just trying to stay in time.
Okay, well, we appreciate that, thank you very much. And we do have time for questions. I was going to extend the time because I think this is such an important piece, so. But I will ask Dr Cross, was there anything that you wanted to add before I put to council if there's any questions?
In the slide deck, there was a piece about the pro-program, Practice Ready Ontario, and across the hall, we have two pro-doctors who were recruited to replace Dr Gair when he retired.
Good news, we love that. Okay, so councillor, we do have something ready for this, because we knew this was coming. We worked with staff to bring this forward. So I can either put it on the table, or you can ask questions, but I think what I'll do is I'll read this, and if there's any questions regarding this or to any of the presenters, you can ask it then, once we've read the resolution. So it's moved by councillor Strength, seconded by councillor Robinson. Whereas councillor for the town of Gravenhurst is committed, as identified in the strategic plan, to advocating for improved local access to healthcare and mental health services for the committee. And whereas the town of Gravenhurst's current funding partnership with the Health Human Resources Task Force concludes on December 31, 2025. And whereas the Muskoka-Algonquin Ontario Health Team HHR Task Force has been recommended to continue the doctoral recruitment program due to continued ongoing shortage of primary healthcare practitioners for the community, therefore be it resolved that the deputation from Greg Stephens of the Muskoka-Algonquin Ontario Health Team be received for information, and finally, that the mayor consider the inclusion of a three-year commitment of the $10,000 for the program within the 2026 budget. So councillor, are there any questions about the resolution or to the presenters today? Okay.
Thank you.
I, I will consider that. It took me off guard reading that last line, because as we know, that there's been some changes in the way that we look at budgets. But this is now, now your time to, you know, if you think this is a good idea, I'd love to hear it, love to hear about it, but if not, then I will, if there's no questions, I will call the question on the, on the resolution. Okay, so that was unanimous decision of support, and I do want to thank all the work that goes in behind the scenes to recruit physicians and nurse practitioners. You know, they're both primary caregivers, so we want to make sure that we all are on the same page as far as that goes. So we appreciate all the work that's going in. We, you know, still pushing towards that upstairs finale. We're getting there.
We are.
I saw, I did watch the presentation, this very similar presentation at Health Services at Committee at the district this cycle, last cycle, and I was pleased to see that the funding from the district just needs to be ratified for their contribution next door. So that's great news. So keep up the good work, and we appreciate you coming today, so.
Thank you, everybody.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so last on our list of deputations, last but not least, we'll say, we have Eric from Hale-Muskoka to discuss municipally significant event designation for Hale Market's events. So welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon, your worship and members of council. I'm here on behalf of Hale-Muskoka to share the details about our upcoming 2025 market series and to request council support in declaring the next three events as municipally significant. This designation is required for us to facilitate a sale of alcohol through the Alcohol Gaming Commission of Ontario Special Occasions Permits. The purpose of the events, these markets are designed to showcase local talent, food and beverage creators, and market-themed artisans. These events are vibrant, family-friendly, and community gatherings. The event details are Board of, Board and Barrel, a charcuterie-inspired market on Thursday, August 28th, in two weeks. Inhale/Exhale, a wellness market, Thursday, September 11th, and a Fall Harvest, Thursday, October 9th. All the Muskoka events will take place, we're gonna, there's a little bit of a change, I think I had it at 12 till 4. We're, we, we want to alter to 3 to 7, if we can, 3 PM to 7 PM, and I think it's a stronger time of year, it's less hot, and you know, it's good for people and their, and their health concerns. It's free admission to the public. Expected attendance will be 2 to 400 people per event. The community benefits are curated mix of food and beverage purveyors, local makers and community-focused vendors, complimentary booth space for Gravenhurst Against Poverty and the West Gravenhurst Food Bank at each event. And it'll showcase and supports local, the local economy and charitable organizations. Alcohol service and compliance. Plan to include licensed alcohol vendors. Municipal declaration of significance is required for the AGCO permits. Commitment to comply with all municipal bylaws, include, including but not limited to noise, signage, and we plan to apply for signage permits and traffic management, which, of which signs will support. In closing, we're committed to working closely with the town to ensure that these events are safe, well-executed, and aligned with community standards. And we respectfully request council to declare these events municipally significant to support the permitting process. I'm happy to answer questions and provide further detail if you require.
Great, well, thank you, I appreciate your presentation. I will let council know that this has been pulled, this is planning to be pulled, councillor Jorgensen had asked for this to be put on the consent agenda, so I suspect it will be added to new business. So that will be the time to debate the, the motion, just for process procedure. So we will get to this, but it won't be till later in our meeting. But are there any questions? Okay, councillor Morphy?
Thank you, worship, through you. It was fun, it was fun on Sunday. Attendance, do you have an idea how many people came?
Yeah, 2 to 400, I think. That's, but it's, it's not, we shouldn't have a deluge, the deluge. It should be like a market, coming and going. And, and that's why we want to alter, we want to work with the, with the council and determine kind of the best times. And so heat is one, mentioned 3 to 7. Traffic would be impacted there, too, so we think that's a better time than earlier.
Okay, did you have something further?
Yeah, I had a two and one. I was just going to ask you about the parking, because it was quite overwhelming, like when you got there, where to go, and is that, are we looking at that at all?
No, I don't think we'll have any of that. I think we have designated parking, and I think people will be coming and going, we'll offer, provide the same shuttle service that we provided. But with the signage, if we can, you know, again, we're, we're going to be presenting to council for, for lawn signs, we think we can even monitor it better in a, in a more productive way. At least we can, we can tell people where the shuttle service is, when we're overloaded, we can go out and put it into the, into the marketplace and avoid some of the issues that we have, notwithstanding that we are looking for other locations for off-site parking that are permanent, that we can own and represent. And we've been doing that since the beginning. It, it's not lost on us, you know.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, anybody else? Well, I'll say that I think everybody had a fantastic time that was there on Sunday. It was, it was hot, hot, hot. But I think, you know, considering the turnout that I saw, I saw lots of people coming and going, we had a pretty great turnout for the hot weather, so you must be pretty pleased with that.
Thank you.
And lots of, heard lots of positive feedback. My husband's still eating stuff that he bought there. We got peaches and bread and all kinds of stuff, so it was fantastic. So is there anybody else? Okay, well, we appreciate you coming. And again, we'll be discussing that. They have, staff had been, had the heads up given to them that this was coming forward. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, so that brings us to the end of our, our deputations. And we're moving on to the consent agenda. It's moved by councillor Johnson, seconded by councillor Jorgensen. Be it resolved that the following consent agenda items be approved. Correspondence, Hale-Muskoka RE municipally significant event. Report 2025 mid-year financial review. Report emergency management program update. Report Manson-Cowbell Lane and Mitchell Road closing bylaw. Councillor Jorgensen?
Thank you, your worship. No surprise, yes, we want to pull the first item there.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anybody else for anything? Okay, seeing none? So we'll move that item to new business. So please vote on the remaining items, please. Okay, and that carries, thank you. Okay, so new business. 2026 budget review and guideline, report number FIN 202514. Be resolved that report number FIN 202514, RE 2026 budget review and guideline be received for information. Treasurer?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good afternoon, everyone. So this report essentially is a financial ceiling that is, it's not set in stone. It's basically will be, it's basically looking at, the focus is basically on climate adaptation and mitigation. So the intent is to really look at, try to identify efficiencies over the next couple of months just to minimize the tax burden for residents. So just to go through quickly our budget guidelines. So the 2026 budget, of course, will follow the strong mayor's budget framework. And in our, in our guidelines, we have a projected 8% tax levy increase, 3% towards capital cost, and 5% towards operational expenses. And with our resulting, we are offset of 1% increase in assessment that will bring us to 7% increase in our tax levy. Just off note, just to point out, the, in our 5% allocation, which forms a part of the 8%, we have included a 1% built-up reserve fund that's aimed at going towards our winter extreme, extreme winter events. So we have included that. So just to point that out to you, and the other budgetary impacts are inflationary-driven. So we just put in this forward to say to you that this is just, there can potentially be a decrease in our tax levy impact. For example, there may be an increase in our assessment, which may reduce the impact. So, so again, let's say it's a financial ceiling, and we are committed to finding efficiencies to minimize the financial burdens for our, for our residents. So that's it for me for right now. If you have any questions, feel free to ask. Thank you so much.
Great. Councillor, are there any questions for the treasurer? Councillor Jorgensen?
Thank you, your worship. With respect in particular to that creation of the new winter control maintenance reserve, what, where are we at? I mean, if we, if we get the money that we were, we've asked for from the province, would that, I think we took that from our tax stabilization reserve. Would be, would the plan be to pay that back? Or what, what would happen with the money that's been requested?
So this money that's been requested, of course, the plan is, it's gonna be 1% of budget that's gonna be built up over time. So it basically is to build up a separate reserve fund over time. The tax stabilization fund that we are actually using that money to finance the deficit, that also needs to be replenished. So it's a different thing altogether. So we're trying to, trying to separate the, the economic impacts on our budget from the winter control impacts. So the aim is really to create this account, to create this, sorry, this fund, basically to, to, for any, as a buffer against any winter, winter, winter control, extreme weather events.
Mr. Lucas?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just to add to that, I think part of the challenge we have with the tax stabilization reserve is that we don't, aside from circumstances where we have a surplus at the end of a budget year, that's where that money goes by council policy, as opposed to something like this where we're trying to, or suggesting that we should entrench an annual contribution to a reserve to deal with significant weather events as we've dealt with over the last year or so. So I, even the tax stabilization reserve, if I, and Mr. Campbell can correct me if I'm wrong, it, before it was depleted to pay for the deficits based on the storms we experienced, it was really funded by surpluses that we had experienced prior to that. So this is getting a more formalized system and consistent system of feeding that, knowing that we're likely to experience circumstances like this more, more frequently, so.
Okay, any other questions? Okay. I don't know what happened there. Okay, did you have another question? Okay. So I'll ask you to vote. It was received for information. And that carries, thank you. All right, so moving right along to the corporate lease policy. Report number FIN 202515. Be resolved that report number FIN 202515, RE corporate lease policy be received for information, and that committee approve the corporate lease policy as presented. I'm gonna go over to Director Campbell. Okay, welcome.
Thank you, your worship, and members of council. I am, as Director Campbell suggested, I'm presenting the corporate lease policy here today. This has been a labor of love for senior leadership team in pulling this together. It's, it actually comes out of one of the lean projects that was undertaken back in 2021, you know, in order to find efficiencies within the municipality. In a nutshell, what this policy does is it delegates authority to the Director of Infrastructure and the rest of administration to engage into lease agreements with the public where we can receive fair market value for those leases. So for instance, if we have, our real estate agent tracks down a lease that is at fair market value, I mean, the administration has delegated authority to enter into that agreement. So for agreements that are outside of fair market value or community partnerships, those leases would come to council for consideration. Or in the odd circumstance where there might be additional consideration, again, the final decision would rest with council. The delegated authority amount that we chose was $50,000 in annual revenues, and that was to keep consistent with our procurement policy. And some of the other processes in place that we have is the Finance Department under the Director of Financial Services oversees the negotiation of the terms of the lease, and that's part of our due diligence process in ensuring that there's transparency in the process. Other than that, that's basically the policy in a nutshell, and I'd be more than happy to entertain any questions that you may have.
Okay. Councillor, are there any questions? Councillor Morphy?
Thank you, your worship, through you. I have to ask, subletting. On the sublet, this comes back to council. How do you see that working? I don't, would you bring a report to us with a recommendation or? Thank you.
Through your worship, to councillor Morphy. Again, if we can't determine fair market value, or if those, one of those unique circumstances, yes, we would, the intention would be to come back to council for direction and consideration on those, those types of agreements.
Okay, councillor Johnston?
Thank you, your worship, through you. To the, to the Deputy Treasurer, Rob, if I can call you that. Rob, I think it's a very prudent policy, I really do. My only question is, on the, and you alluded to it, is the delegated authority amount of 50,000. I think that's too low. I know, as you said, it's in the procurement policy. Let me put it this way. I think perhaps we should consider whether it may be too low for a couple of reasons. One is that, as we've noted in other issues here, climate and all sorts of other factors are really ramping up costs that we have to look at. And one of the, one of the marks of a well-run municipality, and this is certainly one of them, is that a lot of things that normally would go to a council are delegated appropriately to senior staff. And, and I would, I would be happy with a higher limit on, on that, provided that when, when, when a lease is approved under that, under that section, that at some point in time, council simply made aware of those. Other than that, I'm okay with it. As I said, I just think it would, it would allow the director a little more leeway. As I said, I think 50,000 is about bottom low at the moment. It's sad to say, but I think that's a reality. So I just wonder, do you have any thoughts on that? Thank you.
Through your worship, through your worship, to councillor Johnston. Actually, that was one of the items that we did as a, as a group, discuss thoroughly. The reason why we chose that amount, again, it goes back to the limits that we, or the thresholds that we had set through our procurement policy. Currently, the town doesn't have any lease agreements outside of our community partners where the annual lease revenues exceed 50,000. So again, those, you know, the ones that are, are partnership agreements that do exceed the 50,000, you know, those have been mentioned in the policy that they would be brought to council for consideration.
Councillor Strength?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, through you, to Mr. Rosilius. Do we think this policy is going to make it easier for people? This is for new lease-ors, leasees, is that correct? I'm not sure if it's e's or o's. Because obviously, you know, it takes out a little bit of bureaucratic process. Is it gonna make it easier for people to, to be partners of the town of Ravenhurst?
Through your worship, through your worship, to councillor Strength. That, that is the intent of the policy, is economic development was very adamant in saying that we are open for business. And if we can standardize this process for most of our lease agreements, especially if we're achieving fair market value, then yes, it, it makes it easier for them, and it just eases the burden and just makes us a better partner to work with in the future.
Councillor Morphy?
Thank you, your worship, through you. 3.8 gross lease. It says, pay a fixed rate of rent, the landlord pays all maintenance, utilities, taxes, and capital costs without further adjustment from the tenant. So the question is, if there is a need of a leasehold improvement, does that need to be debated, discussed, come to us? For example, if somebody needed air conditioning, something like that, would that be something the town takes on as part of this 3.8? Or, yeah, how do you go about resolving those issues?
Through your, through your worship, to councillor Morphy. Again, those, those would be decisions that we would have to go through as part of the negotiation process. I can, not to speak out of turn for the Director of Infrastructure, but I know his group does a lot of work with potential tenants in making sure that we have a space that's leasable to the satisfaction of our clients, our tenants. So again, it all depends on the nature of the leasehold improvement. Those have to be considered when negotiating the lease. So, and to answer your question, it depends.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions? I have one. In one of the sections, 3.13, registered charity, the advancement of religion, which I was surprised because I know with some of our, with Terrence's hate, they're not supposed to be affiliated with a church, like with the advancement of religion. So I was just surprised why that would be considered a charity in, in this section.
In response to your question, your worship, the, that was included as a part of the definition of the group. And again, because it would be outside of the delegated authority for the Director of Infrastructure, any type of those, any types of those requests would be presented to council for consideration.
Oh, so those, those would be left, so you'd put us in the hot seat to debate that?
Exactly.
Okay.
I get myself in enough hot seat.
Yeah, that makes more sense, okay. Because I just, I just, I mean, unfortunately, religious is a touchy subject sometimes, right? So I just wanted, was wondering where that was, how that was fit in there. But thank you. Thanks for leaving that to us for now. Are there any other questions? Okay, so council, there was a question, a motion at the beginning of all of this, so And that carries, thank you. Okay, so council, we're just breezing through here. Accessibility, Accessible Way Finding Pilot Project, report number LEG 202505. Be resolved? Be resolved that report number LEG 202505, RE Accessible Way Finding Pilot Project be received for information, and that the mayor consider including the Accessible Way Finding Pilot Project as part of the 2026 capital budget? And finally, that as recommended by the Ravenhurst Accessibility Advisory Committee, the project be funded through the Accessibility Reserve. Deputy Clerk, welcome. Oh, we're going to, sorry, we're gonna go to the clerk first, please. Director Thibault?
Thank you to the Chair, to all of council. This report should be a bit familiar to you, as it was directed by council at the last meeting, based on some work with the Accessibility Committee. So I'm just gonna do that brief introduction of how it got here, but our deputy clerk, Jonathan Gilston, has done a lot of work and research, and is gonna give you a very brief overview of it. The report has a lot of detail, but he's available to answer any questions, as well as the, the council representative, councillor Varney, if you have any further questions. So over to the deputy clerk.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. So providing a high-level summary of the pilot project and the report, this is a culmination of the review conducted by the Accessibility Advisor Committee over the past couple of months, which was done in collaboration with the CNIB. So the conclusion of that review was to put together a pilot project, which involves the use of the Blind Score app at Town Hall. The other half of it for the project would be an accessibility review of Town Hall, which would complement the inclusion of the new app. As noted in the report, the pilot project- As noted in the report, the pilot project is recommended to be funded through the Accessibility Reserve, although it was created for projects like this, so it was leaned on or recommended for its use. But other opportunities for searching or looking for other funding opportunities will be reviewed, as well for any potential expansion of the projects or the app to other areas of the town. So that pretty much is a summary of the project. The committee is very excited for it and looking forward to its implementation if it's approved. So with that, Madam Mayor, I'll answer any questions you may have.
Okay. Are there any questions? I mean, we did hear quite a bit about this the last meeting, so very exciting project. I did want to recognize the Chair of the Accessibility Committee is here with us today, and I know that... I believe maybe you missed the last one, where we talked about this the first time, but we appreciate you being here today. And I think this is an exciting project. I do have a question, though, for the clerk, procedura, if there's no other questions. So when I read this, and like when I read the other one, that was the other ask for the funding for the doctor recruitment, it said that the mayor consider. So my question to you is, are we taking these... The last one was unanimous, and if this is a unanimous vote in support as, yes, let's put them in the budget, is that what we can expect? Is that how we're all seeing this? Because I know that ultimately, I'm the decider, but by you all voting to move this forward, I would hope that when the budget comes, go, oh yeah, we voted for that. So could you just explain how that works?
I'd love to. Thank you. So as of May 1st, 2025, town of Gravenhurst, like many other municipalities across Ontario, became a strong mayor municipality. And therefore, some things stayed the same, some things were adjusted. One of the things being the budget, annual budget and budget process. Some things in the strong mayor legislation could be delegated back to council or staff. Some things couldn't be, which is the budget. So the process now, as per the strong mayor legislation, is the mayor presents their budget. So you are presenting your budget, and it is not something that could be delegated back. So you, with support of others, of course, will be creating the budget under your name and presenting it and tabling it to your council. So you are the one who are required, based on the Municipal Act Strong Mayor Section, to include things in the budget. So the way these motions are worded now is a motion that said, and that council puts this in a motion in a budget, would be not legal or not proper wording anymore. So that's the change. So you as the Chair and the member of council tabling the budget can put what you'd like. You have a consensus of council for these things, so I'm sure you'll consider that as you're working through the process with staff. But ultimately, it is now your budget to table. There is going to be... There was a bit of this detail in the Budget Guideline Report, but there is opportunity for council to make amendments, to either add or remove things, and that vote would be a normal process. And then after that, there is an opportunity for you, as the strong mayor, to veto any amendments, which can then be further vetoed by council. So there is a lot of steps, which is a long explanation for the reason why the motions are worded as they are. And administration are committed to making the budget process as familiar and smooth as possible, while still being in compliant with our legislation. And that's the reason why the motions are written how they are and for council to vote how you have been.
Okay, great. Counselor Jorgensen?
Just on that, just further on the process there. So typically, we've dealt with the budget in, you know, two or three or four days, whatever it is, when it's presented. And I'm just reading that, you know, once the budget is tabled, then council has 30 days to meet and provide amendments. We don't have to wait the 30 days, though. That's, I guess, the bottom line there. We can still deal with it as we have in a short number of days, rather than waiting for 30 days.
Correct. The timelines are identified, however, there is an opportunity for the mayor... Either the council has a motion, or the mayor to put in a directive to shorten those timelines. So in the guideline report you received, there are some proposed shortened timelines, which basically make it the same schedule that council has received historically. A budget is tabled, a couple of weeks later, there'll be presentations from staff, an opportunity for council amendments, and then the new feature is an opportunity for the mayor to veto council amendments. What is not present anymore is that final motion to adopt the budget. Council as a whole, we've adopted it. The process now is mayor tables the budget, council adds any amendments as they seem fit, mayor opts to veto or not veto. If a veto is put forward, then there is one final vote on that, which does require a two-thirds majority versus a regular majority. And yes, the mayor is able to vote in that two-thirds majority. Fortunately, we've invested in a very amazing AV system that has the two-thirds majority already factored in, so we just press a different button and all is well. And then, once we conclude that process, then we just say, okay, the budget's adopted. There's not that final motion anymore. So it's going to be familiar as also different. But that's the strong mayor legislation, and we'll follow it.
So I guess the reason I brought it up is, I was quite surprised, actually, there wasn't more discussion surrounding the Budget Guideline document that came, but I did want to, obviously, because of the language in that, it does say the mayor consider. So I do see your light is on Counselor Morphy. I'll just finish my thought. The reason I wanted to bring that up is, I'm taking that as these are not... Like, I'm making a mental note, and I will be sure that, you know, I know this is important. So if we approve this, and it's unanimous, that's staying in the budget. So I just wanted to be clear, from my standpoint, as being the ultimate approver, that I consider this... When these are passing, I consider these as they're in, they're staying in, and we're not debating them again. So does that seem like how it should seem to everyone? Okay, great. So I'll go over to Counselor Morphy.
Thank you, your worship through you. This is actually to you. On the resolution, I would wonder if you would consider at the very end, the project be funded through the Accessibility Reserve after a thorough review of available provincial and federal funding has taken place. I did a quick... Well, not a quick. I took a half a day and looked into accessibility funding, and it's abundant. And it looks like we could qualify for money on this project if we... You know, and words matter. People change, councils change, and I just thought I would like to change the resolution if you so wished.
I mean, I'm just going to go back to the deputy clerk. Did you say that there, you know, that you would be looking for funding for this?
Through the mayor to Counselor Morphy. Yes, so at every opportunity we can to look for additional sources of funding, we will take it. But in order to facilitate any projects, we need to have a backup in case we actually cannot get awarded the grant. So the Accessibility Reserve will be the primary source for the money or the funding, should we not be able to get the provincial grants.
So I guess my question is, I mean, we can put an amendment on, but I mean, I have faith that they're looking for free money all the time. I hope that we are. I suspect that we are. So... And I see our Chair nodding. So rather than amending, I mean, if there's a second or to amend it, but I think that the deputy clerk did mention. So I don't want to not have somebody second it, but if we're confident that that's already the process. Is that okay, Counselor Morphy? Yep? Okay. Great. Counselor Strength?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, through you. Just for clarity, so the way I see the difference between the two items is that the accessibility fund is being approved by us, but the recruitment money is coming from the tax levy. So in fact, they're two different approvals. You're approving the... Or you will suggest that in the budget that you present, that the HHR funding is there, or the $10,000 is there, and that this accessibility is coming... We're approving as council that it's the accessibility fund is being used, the reserve. Is that correct? Am I off track?
Director Thibault?
Thank you, through the Chair, to Counselor Strength. The reason for that particular line is because the Accessibility Reserve has a very specific terms for the use of its reserve, and which says that in order to use this reserve, the policy identifies that first, the Accessibility Committee has to pass a motion saying they're using that. And then, for auditing purposes, council needs to identify where it's coming from, and that's all stipulation within the Accessibility Fund Reserve policy. So that reserve is limited compared to the greater tax rate. So that line is written for that particular... To meet compliance with our reserve policy for that account.
So counsel, are there any other questions about this? I think we all agreed the last time that this is a really exciting new project, and we're looking forward... Trailblazers, I think we use the term. Yeah. Great. Okay. So with that, I'll have everyone vote, please. And that carries. Thank you very much. And we've been at it an hour. I think we can get through. There's only a couple more items. So we're going to plow through, I think. And welcome to Gravenhurst Fire Department. So it's moved by Counselor Hunter, seconded by Counselor Johnston. Be it resolved that Report Number FES 202503, Establishing and Regulating Gravenhurst Fire Department Bylaw Update, be received for information, and that the revised Establishing and Regulating Bylaw be presented for adoption. So Chief?
Thank you, your worship. Good afternoon, counsel. It's my pleasure to be here with many of my staff, who I'll introduce shortly, to present to you the latest iteration of perhaps the... Well, it is the most important document to the fire department, our Establishing and Regulating Bylaw, which is our council-approved mandate to how we deliver our fire services, the parameters in which we work. And it's a mandate that is both very public to our community and also to my staff, so they know with which... How they're to operate and with what rules set by you folks. As you may or may not recall, it was recommended in the master fire plan that we update our ENR bylaw on a regular basis. And as that is, I think we can all agree that we live in an ever-changing, fast-growing community. Our department is... We're always changing to keep up with that. And I think updates to this ENR bylaw, whether or not they're recommended or not, are going to become more frequent. So we took it... We were going to introduce... The idea was to just introduce the fire prevention policy that Assistant Chief McKelvey is going to speak to. But we did take the opportunity, on the recommendation of our clerk, who I would like to thank Director Thibault and Deputy Clerk Gilson for the assist with the legalese of the document. We took the opportunity to make some changes that were long, long coming. We made the language gender neutral. The changes we made to it make it easier to update, and to update to reflect current legislation and our current service capabilities. Also, just on that note, we will be doing another major future update, as we all know about mandatory certification, and what exactly we're going... What path we're going to take for specialized rescues. So with the document, if it's accepted and passed today, that change will be easier to make and present to you when the time comes. But more to come on that. So that being said, the largest change to it is the fire prevention policy, which we're calling the FPP. It's the biggest change. I want to give a special shout-out behind me, Kyle. Fire Prevention Officer Kyle is our... Kyle Steele is our latest full-time hire. Kyle has proven himself to be very adept in the role very early on. He is the author of the fire prevention policy, and under the direction of our not-so-newly-promoted, but our promoted former prevention officer, Assistant Chief Kevin McKelvey, who will speak to the fire prevention plan in our policy in further detail. And then after, we'll be happy to take any questions.
As you may or may not know, we, as a fire prevention division, currently can only perform inspections by request or complaint. This is a reactive state. As one of the recommendations from our master fire plan, an updated slash new prevention policy was to be created. With consultation of many other fire prevention departments, town departments and staff, we have put together a comprehensive policy. With this policy, Schedule A, the Fire Prevention Division will be proactive in addressing fire safety in our community. We'll work closely with the community members and business owners to educate them in fire safety and bring the buildings, where necessary, into compliance. Schedule A speaks to this with an inspection template that will allow the Fire Prevention Division to follow and shows parameters for the public and us as to inspections of the buildings that younger adults, children, and our most vulnerable may reside. We have added occupancies that have never been inspected for fire safety and kept the kinds of inspections we have already been performing. As you can see in the template, beside each type of occupancy, we've listed a minimum number of buildings we'll inspect on an annual basis. The policy sets parameters that will allow the Fire Prevention Division to continue to engage with community groups and individuals promoting fire safety. This will be accomplished through station tours, school visits, a stronger presence on social media and in person, with events like the farmer's market, where fire safety messaging can be discussed one-on-one. This policy sets out a template that will allow... Or sorry, also allow us to work closely with the town's building department at the plans review stage to ensure new buildings are following the S-1001 standard, Integrated Testing of Fire Protection and Life Safety Systems. This new standard is important and ensures the building's life safety systems all work together and perform as they were intended. Currently, there is only individual system tests, and they're not tested as a complete system. As the town grows and changes, this policy can be adapted and changed as needed. Thank you.
Great. I'm sorry, I wasn't sure. I didn't know if Kyle was going to... No, Kevin's taking the lead here. Thank you, Kevin. All right, I should say Assistant Chief McKelvey, pardon me. Great. Are there any questions about this? Counselor Johnston?
Thank you, through your worship, through you. It isn't so much a... I want to make a brief comment about the FPP. And I say I have a question, so I'm in line with the procedure, you know? Do you have a question? Yes, I do. It's small, but I do have one. But I just want to... On the FPP, I commend what's been suggested in the fire prevention policy. And I do agree with you, Chief, that that document is probably the most important document you have. In my last post in Nippising, the last thing that I did was update our ENR. And I was at a conference in North Bay with all the CAOs and fire chiefs from Nippising District. And the fire marshal, somebody from the fire marshal's office that was there, I made a very interesting comment that stuck with me. And the comment was that, you know, if the municipality wants to reduce the costs of fighting fires and casualties and all this, he said, there's one very simple... sort, he said, there's one very simple thing you can do, prevent them. And so everything that can be done in a municipality to prevent fires, and that's educating the public. And when we took our new E and R and the new public engagement that you've mentioned in yours, and again, it's a great, it's a great policy, and it's a great, great new update, the public engagement was magnificent, and our rate of fires went down over the next year because the public understood, you know, how to prevent a fire. And so I commend you on that. My question then, so I'm following the rules, is it mentioned that the, under communications, that there'll be a media release, and the E and R bylaw will be accessible on the town's website. Will there be an opportunity, Chief, or is there a need, either you or the deputy chief, for the public to comment on that or make suggestions? Would that be part of the public engagement strategy for bringing the public involved in the, in the policy? Thank you.
Through the chair, to Counselor Johnston, thank you for the question. No, I don't really think there is a public consultation. How this document, both the FPP and the updates to the E and R itself, have been presented to you are, they are within our scope, or how do I say this? They're within our ability to deliver. With the recent addition of another Fire Prevention Officer, that is, that was the catalyst for us to be able to have this in place. So, and you could almost always already say there has been public input as well, because when you look at the amount of what went in, the research went into this, the amount of request inspections that we would get from our public is what we use to inform what buildings would go in here for mandatory inspections. So in essence, we already have done a SUEDO, Community Input Session with it, as far as getting like the request inspections that we get, I'm gonna say inundated with, Kevin, is that a fair assumption? But yeah, I hope that answers your question.
Counselor Johnston?
Thank you, Your Worship, through you. Shamelessly, Chief, I'll have to admit, it wasn't much of a question. I had to ask a question, so I agree with everything you said. I just, I wanted to comment on the policy itself, and how, I admire all that you and your team has done on that. So as I said, it was a, it was a throwaway question, but you answered it very well. Thank you.
Okay, Counselor Jorgensen?
Thank you, Your Worship, through you. One thing I, I see that, again, I'm speaking of the fire prevention policy here, hotels and motels, we're targeting one per year, I know that a lot of municipalities require as part of their short-term rental agreements to have a fire inspection, and I don't believe that we have that in our short-term rental licensing, and I'm just wondering, it seems to me that your policy would permit it under 6.4, which is additional inspections as required kind of thing. I'm just wondering if you could comment on whether that might be something to look at in our short-term rental, whether you're concerned in particular about fire safety in our short-term rentals, and I'll just put you on the spot and ask for a comment on that, if I may.
We're just debating here, Director, Director, who's going to, I'll start, through the chair, to you, Counselor Jorgensen. Thank you for the question. It's a difficult one to answer. I think the best way is the way we've been doing it. When a short-term rental is let, let's say, when the license is let, we push the fire safety information with it. It's, we wouldn't have the capacity. I myself, and maybe this isn't the form to say this, but I do struggle to see how other departments of similar size can get into every short-term rental and say they're actually doing it. So when we were consulting, when the process first came up, it was what can we do with the resources we have to make as great an impact as we can to fire safety? And that is what we decided upon, is to give the fire safety information to them that in the hopes, as a responsible owner of a short-term rental, that they're sharing that with their, with their renters. Also, on that note, just to, I guess, it's a shameless plug for the burn ban, but we are working now with some areas that have a lot of STRs, and to get that information out as well, and get the information into the hands of those people who own those properties to let their renters know that there is a burn ban in place. So it was more of a decision from our standpoint, and Director Halford may have more to add, that it was a resource thing, how could we, with what we have in place, get the information out there, short of doing inspections of all of them?
I think it was answered sufficiently, unless you had something to add, Director? Nope. Okay. Great. Very thorough answer. Thank you, Chief. As always, yes. Does anybody else have any questions? Okay, I have a question, more of a comment, I guess, and perhaps it's probably about, yeah, no, I'll say it now, I'll ask it now. You know, people just getting snippets of this conversation are gonna say, oh, the Gravenhurst Fire Department's gonna go knocking around and, you know, knocking on doors and barging into people's homes, and that's not the intent here, right? Like, we're just, we're just gonna make people safe, nobody, we're not gonna walk up to a door and knock on the door and say, hey, we're here right now, we're coming in. That's not gonna happen, is it?
Thank you, Your Worship. No, that is not the intent, and for what you're kind of saying, that is more your home, your residence, we still, there is nothing even in the Fire Prevention Act, or Ontario Fire Prevention Act, that will enable us to do that. This is targeting larger areas, assemblies, assembly occupancies, hotels, apartment buildings, apartments that we're made aware of, that have more than a certain number of bedrooms or rooms or units. Yeah, so it's, those ones, we may contact the owner and say, yes, we'd like to come and inspect your property, and advise you of what may be right, what may be wrong. But ultimately, yes, we cannot come to someone's home, knock on the door, and say, hey, we're here to look at your house. That can't happen.
Good. I mean, I understood that, but I, you know, just wanted to, again, if somebody got this much of the conversation. Chief?
If I may, and I'll try not to be long-winded, like, what Assistant Chief McKelvey is alluding to is that the buildings that we have on the inspection schedule, we already have a fantastic relationship with those owners, very communicative. Our prevention division is very much educating first, and fine if we must. So I, just a shout-out to them, that this, this basically is to give them the parameter, and why we want to make it public and get it out there to say that, you know, so these owners of these facilities know that we're going to be looking to them to work with us for fire safety in these places.
Okay, thank you. All right, if there's no other questions, I will call the question. The bylaw will be at the council agenda. Matt Carries, thank you. Now we are going to go back to items drawn from the consent agenda. It's moved by Counselor Jorgensen, seconded by Counselor Strength. Be it resolved that the correspondence from Hale-Muskoka RE municipally significant events dated July 29, 2025 be received for information, and that committee designate the following events hosted at Hale-Muskoka as municipally significant, board and barrel, a charcuterie-inspired market, inhale exhale, a wellness market, and see fall harvest market. So, I mean, this is not news to us, as far as what significant events mean. Counselor Jorgensen, is there something you wanted to add, or?
I would just like to say, I think this is, you know, for those of us who attended, this is a welcome addition to our community. I think they're, you know, they've proven already to me that this is a, they're excellent in marketing, and bringing, bringing people there that certainly were from out of town, and I'd like to, you know, give them the opportunity to, as people have brought up, you know, work to improve the parking situation, things like that, but in general, I think this is a welcome addition, and I think there's a potential for many events there in the future, and these three deserve our support as well.
Okay. Counselor Strength, anything to add?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd just say that for the people that unfortunately couldn't attend, I still think it's a great support, we should support it.
Okay, great. I would just have one question, if I could, to Director Halford. Will this automatically go on the list for significantly events, because that usually comes to us in March? Or are we gonna wait and see how this goes first, or can we, do we have to, do they have to come back and ask for this? Because we do have a list every year that we approve at once, or do we plan to follow up with them? I mean, as much as it's nice to hear of a delegation, but will they automatically go on a list?
To you, Your Worship, the request that you have now before you is different. It's related to the AGCO liquor licensing requirement. That's what this motion is about, and not related to Development Services Department at all. It has to do with the liquor licensing through Director Tebow's department, who provides comments on liquor license requirements through the AGCO. The significant, or the municipal event report that Director Patterson brings forward from Recreation, which is, I think, what you're speaking to, relates to municipal, or events on municipal property regarding signs and traffic and that kind of thing. So the Hale-Muskoka property does not fall within that report either. So does that answer your question?
Yes.
And Director Tebow may want to provide some feedback, but I had the same question, Your Worship, so that's how I knew how to answer it.
Okay, great. I mean, I was just curious if this is something we can expect to see them back for, but no, I'll go to the director, Tebow?
Thank you, through the mayor to counsel. In working with Hale-Muskoka over the past little bit on options for them for their liquor license, they are available to have a full, regular liquor license, to have alcohol purchasing and consuming at all times as a business would. As they are a new business, there's a variety of different options to streamline some different types of licenses, liquor licenses for them. One was the method that they held on the weekend was for the businesses who came to them to serve alcohol, they brought their license with them. So this, this municipally significant event designation allows them to host and serve and sell alcohol on these particular days. As their business grows and hosts more events, they'll likely be looking for a full-time permit liquor license. So that would be business to the AGCO. The town would be included for non-compliance, letters of non-compliance, and our regular statutory notices that we provide to the AGCO for those types of businesses. But this is, this is a process available to them to be up and running now for these designated events. So that is, they may come forward next year, requested, if they're not there yet, but that's really a business sort of need. As Director Halford said, this is for these particular events, and as a mechanism to obtain a liquor license. And they have more options going forward, but this, this seems to suit their need for 2025.
Perfect. Okay. If there's no other questions, I'll call the question. All in favor? And Matt Carries, thank you. Okay, so we are going to go to Counselor Johnston for a update from counsel on Muskoka watershed.
Thank you, Your Worship. As I usually say every month, I will be brief. We did not have any meeting this month, IWM. So, and we, our major project has been planning for the Living Smarter Summit, which is gonna be on October the 3rd in Bracebridge. And I just wanted to mention that, getting free advertising in the ether here, and the list of speakers, you can go on, if you go to muskoka summit one word dot org, it will show you the agenda, it will show you bios of all the speakers, it will show you the presentations that Finn and his two classmates did a year ago. But two of the keynote speakers, I just want to mention, and then I'll be done, Your Worship. One is, I've invited the founder of the Plant-Based Treaty, which was adopted by COP in Dubai two years ago. She has an office in Toronto, and she's always wanted to come up and talk to Muskoka. So she's gonna be one of the keynote speakers, talking about plant-based agriculture, and which is my new sort of, my new efforts is in promoting that. And it's very, it's much healthier and cheaper, and a quarter of the carbon footprint that animal-based agriculture does. So she's gonna be a keynote speaker. And I gave that message to, I was at the farmer's market a week ago, and gave them all that information, and invited them to go to the summit, and also I said I'd be happy to come out sometime this fall and talk to the farmers about local produce, local produce and plant-based agriculture. The other keynote speaker is also exciting. She's a young lady by the name of Angela Nagy, and she's, she co-founded a, an organization called Green Step, and she's based out of Kelowna, BC. And what she does is she flies all over Canada to various tourist sectors all across Canada, and she talks about how to adapt your tourism sector to climate. And, and so she's gonna be one of our other keynote speakers, and talks specifically about the, how the climate is impacting our environment, which is, to remind everybody, the economy in this district is 100% the environment. So she's gonna talk nationally about what the trends are, and also about what she sees locally as some of the trends for that. So that's, that's, I think, my report for now, Your Worship. Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you. Sounds like some exciting topics. Okay, great. Mine is going to be briefer than that. I'm, I'm not gonna say anything. I've just been doing summer stuff, and I think we've all been busy, and a busy time of year for everyone, and trying to hit every event, and, you know, we're going to Lake Association meetings, and getting out, and, you know, I think these three months are the reason a lot of us live here. We live for this stuff, so I hope everybody's enjoying their summer. It's going fast, goes faster every year, so. We're off to AMO at the end of this week, Counselor Cairns, Counselor Morphy, our CAO and I, and there'll be a report coming back about that. And that's it. That's my August report. So I mentioned earlier about the funding being approved at the Health Services Meeting, which is really exciting, and look forward to hearing where the rotary is at as far as fundraising there, so. All good. So with that, I have a motion to adjourn. Counselor Varney and Counselor Robinson? Please vote. And we will go right into council. Are there any disclosures punitary interest at council? Okay, seeing none? So it is moved by Counselor Morphy, seconded by Counselor Robinson. Be it resolved that the council minutes from July 15, 2025 be adopted as circulated. All in favor? Please vote. Matt Carries, thank you. It is moved by Counselor Strength, seconded by Counselor Varney. Be it resolved that the committee of the whole minutes from July 15, 2025 be adopted as circulated? All in favor? Please vote. And some information coming out of our closed session. It is moved by Counselor Varney, seconded by Counselor Jorgensen. Be it resolved that the following individuals be appointed to the Accessibility Advisory Committee for the balance- Committee for the balance of the 2022-2026 Term of Council, Margaret Martin and Diane Meisner. Okay, before I vote, I just want to thank all that applied and thank these volunteers, our community depends on them, and thank the departing members for their service. So, the, their work was very much appreciated. Matt Carries, thank you. And it's moved by Counselor Jorgensen, seconded by Counselor Hunter. Be it resolved that the following bylaws be read, passed, and engrossed into the bylaw book. Bylaw number 2025-60, Highway 11 entrance closures, Manson-Cowbell Lane and Mitchell Road. Bylaw number 2025-61, establish and regulate the Gravenhurst Fire Department. Okay. Please vote. And be it resolved, it's moved by Counselor Johnston, seconded by Counselor Jorgensen. Be it resolved that bylaw number 2025-62, to confirm the council meeting held on August 12, 2025, be passed. And please vote. Carries, thank you. And a motion to adjourn. Counselor Cairns and Counselor Hunter, please vote.